Good evening. I'd like to call our March 1st Commission Meeting to order. Let us stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have our roll call, please?
Mayor Heinz.
Here.
Commissioner Martin.
Here.
Commissioner Vogt.
Here.
Commissioner Wilson.
Here.
Commissioner Terry.
Here.
Our first part of our meeting tonight is we have some Oaths of Office. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Richard Byron.
Solemnly swear or affirm.
Solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will obey.
That I will obey.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the State of Ohio.
And of the State of Ohio.
That I will in all respects.
That I will in all respects.
Observe the provisions.
Observe the provisions.
Of the charter and ordinances.
Of the charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Pickwa.
Of the city of Pickwa.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of Deputy Chief of Police.
Of Deputy Chief of Police.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, good luck.
Next, we have Lieutenant Jerry Vogt. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Jerry Vogt.
Solemnly swear or affirm.
Solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will obey.
That I will obey.
Constitution and laws.
Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the State of Ohio.
And of the State of Ohio.
That I will in all respects.
That I will in all respects.
Observe the provisions.
Observe the provisions.
Of the charter and ordinances.
Of the charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Pickwa.
Of the city of Pickwa.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Police Lieutenant.
Of the Office of Police Lieutenant.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And now, we have Fire Captain Paul Brown. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Paul Brown.
Solemnly swear or affirm.
Solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will obey.
That I will obey.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the State of Ohio.
And of the State of Ohio.
That I will in all respects.
That I will in all respects.
Observe the provisions.
Observe the provisions.
Of the charter and ordinances.
Of the charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Pickwa.
Of the city of Pickwa.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of Fire Captain.
Of Fire Captain.
Of the Pickwa Fire Department.
Of the Pickwa Fire Department.
Congratulations. All right. What a wonderful way to start our meeting. Wonderful, wonderful. Thank you all so much for your service, and we give thanks for all that you do do for our city. So, thank you very much. At this time, we are moving into a time of announcements for information only. And to begin with, I'd like to invite Reverend Kenneth Stewart from Green Street United Methodist Church, and one of his parishioners to come forward, please. And I'm actually going to walk down there because that may be the easiest way to do this. A few weeks ago, I was reading the paper, and I noticed this amazing article about what your church is doing for our brothers and sisters in Flint, Michigan. And I was really, really excited about that. And as the mayor of the city, I have wanted to do something to help our brothers and sisters in Flint. And one of my mayor friends in Trotwood had a gathering and a water gathering time in her community, and they were able to take that water to Trotwood. So, I thank you for the vision of this mission and ministry here in our community. And as the mayor and the whole commission here, we have two cases of water to give to you. And we are encouraging every citizen in our community to donate a case of water to Green Street United Methodist Church to help you. And we give thanks for your vision and your ministry to carry these to our brothers and sisters in Flint. So, thank you very much. Yep, you're welcome. And I will hand that to you, Kenneth. Thank you so much. Thank you for all that you do here in our community, both of you guys.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you all very much. Do we have any other announcements at this time? If not, we will move into our consent agenda. And I think we only have one thing on that tonight, Gary.
Yes, the approval of the minutes from the February 11th, 2016 Pickwa City Commission Workshop and the February 16th, 2016 Regular Pickwa City Commission Meeting.
Do we have a motion to approve our...
Move to approve the minutes.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. And now, we are moving on to our old business. Our first is Ordinance Number 1-16. And this is our third reading on this ordinance.
An ordinance to vacate a portion of public right-of-way.
Mr. Sommer will provide the staff report.
Good evening. This item is in response to a request to vacate a portion of the right-of-way located between Ford Drive and Young Street. This alley is no longer of public use. The item went before the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission brings it to the City Commission with the recommendation of approving the vacation of this portion of right-of-way.
Okay. Are there any questions about this? Do we have any comments from the public? If not, do we have a motion then to approve this ordinance?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. All right. Actually, I think we need a roll call vote on that. So, let's do that as well.
Mayor Heinz.
Aye.
Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt.
Aye.
Commissioner Terry.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Okay. And now, we move on to Ordinance Number 2-16. This is our second reading on this.
An ordinance amending Chapter 30, Section 30.15 Rules of Conduct for Meetings of the Pickwa Municipal Code.
I'll ask Ms. Wall to provide the staff report.
Thank you. This ordinance comes to you after a work session where it was discussed about how the meeting would operate procedurally. This amends the 30.15 section of the municipal code, which gives the precise order of what happens during a meeting. It also defines who is part of city management and staff to comment on an agenda item, as well as indicating the public comment would take place during the beginning of the meeting on any item, whether it's on the agenda or not, and defines that the public comment would not include, or in other words, after an ordinance item. For example, tonight, we just approved the ordinance to vacate a portion of public right-of-way, which came to us from either the zoning board or the planning board. That applicant would be permitted to speak after that agenda item and not be speaking during the general public comment section. So, it clarifies and defines when and who speaks during the comment section, both in public comment and when we are adopting legislation.
Do we have any questions or comments from the commission?
My comment was just semantics. Number four says "public forum." Number one says "open forum." B says "open forum." Do we need to change the wording at all? Or do we need to... I mean, is it a different forum? Or do we need to just make that clear that it's the same "public forum"? I don't know.
They are the same thing, the public forum and the open forum. So, we can change that if...
I mean, do we need to tweak it so that either "public" goes away or "open" goes away?
Mm-hmm, okay.
We also have "public comment" in there as well. So, maybe we could just make them all uniform.
Well, "public comment" is different than "public forum." So...
Well, then, it says the "open forum" is for the purpose of the public presenting comments. And so, you know, you've got the word "public" there, meaning people from the outside, I'm sure. And then, it says there wouldn't be no public debate, et cetera. But then, "public forum," in number four, I don't know. I just thought that might be a little confusing, not to have that say "open forum."
Okay. I'll go through and review it and make sure it's consistent throughout.
Then, another thing I was thinking about, when people are presenting in the open forum, this will be held at the beginning of the meeting. So, they will be able to give their concerns having to do with the agenda items at that time.
Correct.
Right? And so, they won't have to wait until after the votes are taken.
Correct.
Okay.
So, every single comment, whether it's about an agenda item or not, would be at the very beginning of the meeting. The only exceptions would be if you're reviewing or considering ordinances for the specific examples, mostly a zoning code change or a vacation where there's an applicant. That applicant would be here to address questions during the consideration of that item. But if, say, the neighbor was here to comment, he would be commenting during the very beginning of the meeting, during the public portion, because he's not the applicant.
Okay.
And are the rules of conduct, are they in line with the ordinance rule or the resolution we have on the door? Are they in line with each other?
The rules of conduct that are posted outside the commission meeting didn't change. Those are really Section B. The only thing that I changed was to address that Section 5 said originally that if it got out of hand, basically, a commissioner could make a motion to adjourn the meeting. So, I changed that because we wouldn't be adjourning at that point. We would just be ending the public comment period because that's when all of the comments would be taken. The commission would just move to end the public comment period and then move into its agenda items. So, you're not going to be adjourning out of your meeting. You're just ending the public comment period.
And then, we'd have to have a second and then a vote on that as well?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions from the commission? Anything from the public on this item? And that will serve as our second reading of this ordinance. And now, we move on to new business. Ordinance Number 3-16. This is our first reading, and this is an emergency ordinance.
An emergency ordinance enacting and adopting a supplement to the Code of Ordinances for the city of Pickwa.
Ms. Wall.
Thank you. This ordinance enacts the supplements to our municipal code. These are from 2014. The reason the ordinance is written as an emergency is because those sections from 2014 have already been adopted and approved by this commission. This is the codification that comes back is just how American Legal puts it into the correct format to fit into the municipal code. So, we have already been enforcing and enacting these code sections for over a year now. So, I would request that the three-reading rule be waived.
Any questions from the commission?
I would move to waive the three-reading rule.
Second.
Do we need a roll call vote on that? Okay, let's have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Terry.
Aye.
Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Heinz.
Aye. And now, is there any comment from the public on this? Okay. Then, do we have a motion to then approve this?
Move to approve suspended ordinance 316.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Heinz.
Aye.
Commissioner Terry.
Aye.
Okay. Our next one is a Resolution Number R-32-16.
A resolution retaining the services of the Auditor of State for the 2015 Annual Audit of the City of Pickwa.
Ms. Holt Apple will provide the staff report.
Thank you. Annually, the city of Pickwa undergoes an audit of our financial statements. For the fiscal year beginning January 1st through December 31st of 2015, the Auditor of State will be doing the audit. The summary of the services they will provide is outlined in the attached letter provided to you. The audit will be completed on or about June 30th of 2016 at a cost not to exceed $41,410. This is approximately $615, or 1.5 percent more than last year's audit.
Any questions from the commission?
Are any of these gentlemen, and I guess they're all gentlemen, have they been here before? I think this is the third year we're audited by the state.
This is the third year. We currently have four that are in place, and one of the four is continuing from previous years. Three of them are new.
I think I want to make it clear that this is a requirement by the state and not because of any issues because this is just a normal audit that's done every year.
Yes. We either have to have... It's a requirement that either the state or an independent public accountant does an audit of each city or municipality. So, it's regular and routine.
Right, okay.
Can we ever go back to looking around? And/or is the state going to just keep jumping in every year?
Well, that's a question we'd all like to know. But each year, we... After the audit is complete and the financial statements are released, Mr. Huff and I send a letter to the Auditor of State requesting that the next year's audit be put out for bid. So, we're hoping that within the next couple of years, we'll be back out with an independent.
Do you think we could save money that way?
Um...
Put it out for bid?
We would probably save time.
Yes.
Yeah, time and money. Yeah, okay.
All right. Any other questions from the commission? All right. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number R-32-16?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Now, we are on Number 6. Resolution Number R-33-16.
A resolution authorizing a purchase order to statewide Ford for the purchase of three Ford interceptor utility vehicles and one Ford police interceptor sedan.
Deputy Chief Steiner will present the staff report tonight.
Thank you. In 2003, we began a strategic fleet replacement by purchasing two of the Ford police interceptor utilities for marked service. We then purchased three more in each year, 2014 and 2015. The purchase of the three vehicles for marked service is just a continuation of that replacement plan. And also, in 2015, we purchased one sedan that's to replace our 2003 Ford Taurus vehicles that we used for unmarks for detectives, et cetera. We are recommending continuing on with the purchasing by purchasing all four vehicles through the state bid process but through state Ford. And the total cost for all four vehicles is $101,857.50.
Okay. Any questions from the commission?
Yeah, what model's the car?
Ford classifies them as the police interceptor utility and the police interceptor sedan. They're based on the Ford Explorer and the Ford Taurus.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion to approve... Oh, do we have any public comment on this issue? If not, do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number R-33-16?
So moved.
Second.
Let's have a roll call vote on this.
Commissioner Vogt.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
Commissioner Terry.
Aye.
Mayor Heinz.
Aye. And now, we are on Number 7. Resolution Number R-34-16.
A resolution authorizing a purchase order to the K.E. Rose Company for purchase and installation of specialized equipment in police vehicles.
Deputy Chief Steiner.
Yes. We put out an open bid for the equipping of the police vehicles that was in the last resolution. K.E. Rose submitted the lowest bid at $29,177.50. We've been very satisfied with K.E. Rose's work in the past. And the resolution, the ordinance that we put out has a not-to-exceed amount of 10 percent over the quoted amount for just unexpected costs that might come up.
Any questions from the commission? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve this resolution?
I move to adopt Resolution R-34-16. Second.
Oh, that's right. I forgot "public comment." Is there any public comment on this? Okay. If not, we have a motion and we have a second. So, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. And now, we move on to Number 8. Resolution Number R-35-16.
A resolution, excuse me, authorizing a purchase order to Palmer Trucks for the purchase of a refuse packer truck.
Ms. Welker will provide the staff report.
Thank you. This resolution will authorize the purchase of a refuse packer truck to replace the oldest truck in our fleet, which is a 2004 Sterling Actera. We received 13 bids when we went out, and we selected Palmer as the best and lowest bid for this truck. It did come in well under our budgeted amount, and we were very pleased with the bids we received.
Okay. Any questions from the commission? Any comment from the public? If not, do we have a motion to accept Resolution Number R-35-16?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Moving on to Number 9. Resolution Number R-36-16.
A resolution awarding a contract for purchase of a bucket truck for the power system.
Mr. Bowman will provide the staff report.
Thank you. This is to replace an older vehicle we have, E-42, which is a 2000-year model. It's a 50-foot bucket truck. But this is to replace it, and has many benefits to it. But it's time... It's time restraint. It's time to replace it.
Okay. Any questions from the commission?
You use this primarily to work on the lines, above the poles, and all that?
That's correct. It'll have additional function and be able to hang a transformer with a boom as well.
Okay. Which boom are we getting? The one that's rated for 69 KV or the one for 46?
It'll be the lower voltage, John. It'll be a... It's a... The only thing we work out of the bucket live would be 13,000 volts. That's all that we can work out of that particular bucket with. Anything higher than that, we'll have to de-energize the lines to work on the lines that way.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions? Any comments from the public? If not, do we have a motion to adopt Resolution Number R-36-16?
So moved.
Second.
Need a roll call vote.
Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
Commissioner Terry.
Aye.
Mayor Heinz.
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
And now, we're on Number 10. The Resolution Number R-37-16.
A resolution awarding a contract for purchase of accessory options for a bucket truck for the power system.
Mr. Bowman.
Yeah, this is in conjunction with the previous one. This is to actually install, like, counterbalance weight and so forth on the truck. That's not covered under the Procure Ohio bid. So, this is a separate thing that utility truck equipment has to do to provide us that bucket truck.
Great, thank you. Any questions from the commission?
Yeah, did we bid that out? For the... Accessorizing.
Yeah. With that, John, it's a... Being has the bucket, and then being able to set a boom or being able to set a transformer, that has to have counterweights and so forth put in, and that's all part of the assembly process. So, if you're dealing anything with outrigger alarms, stuff like that, it's currently not covered under the state bid price.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Anything else? Any comments from the public? If not, do we have a motion to adopt Resolution Number R-37-16?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 And now, we're on Number 11. Resolution Number R-38-16.
A resolution to award a contract to Peterson Construction Company for the replacement of the river intake line for the water treatment plant.
I'll ask Mr. Freisteller to explain this item.
Yes, good evening. We're here this evening to ask the award of this contract to replace a 36-inch raw water line as it was not included in the part of the original bid for the new water treatment plant. It was in need of extensive inspection, It was in need of extensive inspection, and at that time, it was unable to be done. So, we, we were able to accomplish it after a couple of attempts. We had divers come in and they, they were able to determine that the line was three-quarters full of sediment, and then we had to do a second attempt with divers to try to clean the line. The divers got in and got all of it, but about 50-foot cleaned, and found the condition of that line so bad, they were afraid of collapse on them while they were working. To that end, with the assistance of Peterson Construction, we were able to bring in a very large steel plate, a six-foot by 12-foot plate, and had to be set in place called a bulkhead. And then, we were able to drain the line and actually do a video inspection of this line. We asked that the contract be awarded to Peterson Construction. These, as the recommendation for slip lining this by CDM Smith, our engineers, was found to be in excess of $475,000. This line is, actually runs from the intake structure, which is under contract to be refurbished by Peterson, which is right along the river. The visual that's on the screen this evening shows the location. It runs from the river itself to our current raw pump station. And Peterson is going to be putting in all-new gates and refurbishing the intake structure, as well as they were under contract to connect the new raw pump station onto this line. But once we found out that the line was actually made of clay pipe and not concrete, as we saw in the original prints in 1925, it has to actually physically be replaced. The cost of open cutting and actually tearing that line out and putting a new heavy-duty plastic line in that we can depend on for our new pump station was much more effective as far as cost. Timing for this is very essential for us, in that we must have the river for the summer months, actually late spring through fall time element, because the lakes, we get too much organics in them and it causes water quality problems and disinfectant formation in the actual system. Peterson has the equipment on site to be able to do this in a very timely manner, and we would highly recommend that the commission move forward with approving this contract for them.
You know, it's always so interesting when you start a project like this and you have, I mean, what, what year did you say, 1925?
Yes.
And you think about just, I mean, how many years have passed in that time? And obviously, it seems like keeping it with Peterson because they're there is much more cost-effective than going out and trying to find somebody else, because they're there, they can take care of it in a timely fashion, versus waiting for somebody else to come in and do it.
Well, I think the additional cost, too, would be, going outside of this process would require us to do complete specifications and plans, which would cost quite a bit of money. They have the ability, since they're on site and are familiar with the project, to save us quite a bit of money on this particular project, so that's our recommendation.
Yeah, makes sense. Any other comments or questions from the commission?
Is, is there a way to keep the sediment from getting in the new pipe, once we put in the new pipe, so it doesn't fill up again a different way, or how does that work?
That really is going to have to be covered with a routine maintenance issue. Sediments are always going to come down that river as long as farmers are tilling their lands and, and we have rain and runoff. The thing that was not done in the past is, at least every five years, we should look at shutting this down, since we'll have operable gates, and actually using the jet that we use in our sewers and such to actually clean all sediments out and confirm we have that line maintained and kept clean all the time.
And then, would you televise it as well, or not?
Yes, it would very, very easily televised as well as cleaned, because we'll have the manholes and areas that we can enter and actually clean that we don't have currently to be able to access that line.
Okay.
So, for the new treatment plant, this line will be servicing the pump station? Is that right?
That is correct. It come, it'll, it's the only line we currently have coming in from the river to the old pump station, and it will be reused. We'll actually tear the old line out as we're putting the new one in. So, it will be the main feed line for the new, new pump station. So, it will be actually, it won't be money just short-term, it'll be a long-term investment, just like the rest of the plant facility.
And I think that the river is our primary source of water anyway.
Yeah, that is exactly what the state only would base our capacity on, was the flow in the great Miami River.
Great, thank you. Anything else from the commission?
In 1925, was a clay pipe, state-of-the-art, or was the cement?
It was interesting, when upon real, real close review, everything said cement pipe, and in very small print, there was an option to allow ore clay pipe. But it was, it was in the fine prints.
You think they did that because it was cheaper, or was it better choice?
I think that absolutely was probably the decision made at that time.
Yeah.
I think so.
Oh, God bless them.
He has built show concrete, but they probably made their decision.
Okay.
They went for the small print, that's what they went for.
We went on to commission at that time.
Oh, we wouldn't have stood for that.
Yeah, that's right.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Anything from the public? If not, do we have a motion to accept resolution number R-38-16?
So moved.
Second.
And we need a roll call vote on this.
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Mayor Hines?
Aye.
Commissioner Vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Okay, now, number 12, resolution number R-39-16.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a housing revolving loan fund agreement, excuse me, with the State of Ohio Development Services Agency for the period January 1, 2016, through December 31, 2018.
Ms. Reese will provide the staff report.
Thanks, Gary. All communities that administer a housing revolving loan fund must sign this administration agreement. This isn't something new that the city has not seen. We've had this agreement and it has been signed since we've had a revolving loan fund. The purpose of this agreement is to maintain adequate program oversight and ensure that communities understand and adhere to the terms of the agreement in conjunction with administering this RLF fund. This agreement is renewed every three years. We have been instructed not to change or modify the language in the agreement, even if we disagree somewhat with the language. Currently, the, or, the city has, we just have home revolving loan funds. There's a combination, you can have CDPG or home. Our balance to date is around $75,000. However, last year, when we applied for the chip funding, the state mandated that we had to obligate all of our revolving loan fund money. And at that time, it was around $58,600. So, we have that money obligated out of the $75,000 for chip projects. The funding that we receive coming into our RLF are from loans that we gave to landlords for chip rental rehab projects. These are monthly payments that are coming back in. And then, also from private owner loans, where they are paying off their loans in entirety. So, that's where the funding's coming into the city. And we are mandated that we can only use that funding for chip housing projects. It can't go for other projects other than housing. So, and we do not have CDPG, RLF funding, just home.
So, the entire $74,000, et cetera, will, will be what will be available for the revolving loan fund, not the 58.6?
That, the 58.6 is part of the 75. As of right now, we have $75,000 total. And then, out of that 75, we have $58,600 that's obligated for this year's chip program.
So, the difference, what, what will become of the difference of that?
That would still remain if we have any other projects that would come up.
Okay.
I'm guessing next year, when we apply for chip again, we'll be mandated again to obligate our entire balance at the time the application is due. And why the state is mandating us to do that, I'm, I really don't have an answer to that other than there are some communities that are sitting on a large amount of RLF funds. We're talking $100,000, $200,000, and they're not using the funding. They want us to make it revolving. And so, by doing that, they're mandating us, if we apply for chip, that we obligate all of our RLF funding that we have at that time towards those projects.
So, so that next year, then, the obligation will be the $74,000 that we have now, our balance?
It'll, it'll be less than that. Because I hope by the end of this year, we'll have spent the $58,600, because we're right now implementing our chip projects. And that funding's going towards those projects now. Now, we are receiving monthly payments from our loans, but I can't really tell you off the top of my head how much we're going to have at next year's application time and what we'll have on hand. There could be someone that comes in and pays off their private owner rehab loan because they sold their house. And that's one of the, the stipulations is, if they move out of that home and we loan them chip funding, they have to pay off that balance. And that balance then goes into our revolving loan fund for future chip projects.
Okay.
Can you give a brief description of the difference between the home funds and the chip funds? Who would be eligible for it in case someone in the audience who are at home is interested in that, because it's a little confusing?
The, the chip program, which is the Community Housing Impact and Preservation Program, we have the possibility of receiving community development block grant funding, CDPG, or home funding. Those are both federal pots of funding that goes into chip, the program. And this funding is for low-to-modern-income households, for either full private owner rehab, where we fix everything in the house up to code, or minor home repairs. Or it could be for a rental rehab project. Again, we would go into the rental, fix everything up to state standards, and it would be a loan to the landlord for those improvements. And then, the landlord would have to rent to low-to-modern-income tenants. So, that's how we capture that part of the low-to-modern-income side of it.
So, how do we get more money in the revolving loan fund so that we can lend it out? If they're going to take it all every time, then where do we get the money to keep this project going?
Well, we still like, for our rental rehab projects, those are loans, and those are monthly payments. So, those are constantly, hopefully, coming in and going into this pot. Unfortunately, we don't have the balance we used to have in the past, because the state is mandating us to obligate this funding every time we apply, which is unfortunate. Say, for instance, next year, we don't, we don't get a chip grant. You know, this is our only source to assist low-to-modern-income families for housing projects. And if it's depleted, it's, you know, we're not going to have the funding there to assist the people that need it.
That's the part I don't understand. They're nail on our feet to the floor by saying, "Oh, that money you have that is coming from your revolving loan fund that you should be able to loan back out, well, I'm sorry, but we're going to take that."
I agree.
John, we're, remember, we're working with the state, so.
Yeah, I forgot.
Thank you very much. Just the work that you have done with the CDPG, the grants and everything else, I mean, it's, how, how much last year, Gary, were we, did we receive in grants from Mrs. Reese's good work?
Nikki probably has it right on, she has probably the exact figure.
I just think that's, I really, that is a celebration. It really is what you've been able to do for our city.
Thanks, it's a little over a million last year.
Yeah, a little over a million dollars. That's amazing. Thank you for your good work.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Any other questions from the commission?
Do we have a motion to accept resolution number R-39-16?
So moved. Second.
And we'll have a roll call vote on this.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Mayor Hines?
Aye.
Commissioner Vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
You know, I forgot to ask public comment, but I'm looking out here, and I don't think anybody else had really mentioned public comment, but if you did have public comment on that.
No public.
There's no public, I know. So, there we go. Well, now, we are, speaking of public comment, we are moving into the public comment portion of the meeting and into the city manager's report.
No report tonight, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that the commission has.
Any questions from the commission?
Yeah, I got a question. Can we look into our, the water level in the river as it goes all through the year? Because they've been, I've been told that in the fall, they have to lower the gates to deal with the water, and then, at a certain point in the spring, they're allowed to raise them back up. Well, when we had a power plant down there, we didn't lower it in the spring, or lower it in the fall, and raise it in the spring, it stayed full all the time. So, this is kind of contradicting what we've done in the past.
There, there is a way, we do have the ability to be able to determine, I think on a daily basis, the water level in the river. They do have access to that now, and I think, I'll have to remember where, where to go to get that, but I know we do have that. It is, currently, we are under the regulation of the Miami Conservancy District on when we lower and when we open the gates, but I'll be happy to look into that water level on a, you know, so that we can monitor that.
Yeah, because fishermen have been, and it's only been like the past four years that the fishermen have been really in an uproar about below the dam not having enough water. So, it seems like something's changed.
Yeah, we could look in, we probably can get past that, too, so we'll.
I think we ought to look into the Division of Wildlife, because the water level at certain times of year depends on the amount of spawn we get off of the fish. They won't spawn, or if it's too low, or whatever, we ought to water-take and try to get with them to, so we can regulate that somewhat.
Okay, we can look into that.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Well, why don't we have Commissioner comment? And Joe, we'll start down with Commissioner Wilson.
I just was real happy to see our promotions today, both in the fire and the police department. No matter who we lose, they keep supplying us really good candidates, and I think we'll be in really good hands with these three. And I also wanted to note Ike Karn from Pickle High School won the Division Two State Champion Diving this year. And if you've ever tried to dive off a diving board, and I have, it's usually pretty ugly when I do it, but imagine what he can do and all the practice and the dedication, and then to be better than everyone else in the state is just unbelievable, so just want to congratulate him, and I think that's all I have.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Terry?
I too wanted to congratulate the gentlemen that were promoted this evening, and also to congratulate Deputy Chief Tom Christie, who retired this past week, and wish him well in his retirement. And I have a note from Gretchen Roeth with Pickle Quanis Club, and she wanted me to remind everyone that the Quanis Pancake Day is coming up, which is one of my favorite days. We always have a good time there. It will hold its, the 61st Annual Pancake Day on Saturday, March 12th, from 7:00 a.m. till 2:00 p.m. at the Upper Valley Career Center. And the meal includes all the pancakes you could eat, sausage, applesauce, and a variety of drinks. Tickets are $6 for adults and $3 for students 12 and under, and they can be purchased from any Quanis member or at the door. And all the proceeds benefit the youth of the community. So, it's a great Saturday morning, a great way to go out and meet some friends that you haven't seen for a while in the middle of the winter and support this good program.
Excellent. Commissioner Vote?
Nothing.
Commissioner Martin?
I would like to congratulate our gentleman that got promoted tonight, and that's all I have.
Great, thank you. Well, I have just a few things. One of the joys of this office is I'm able to give proclamations at different times, and I gave a proclamation last night at Edison for Elizabeth, known as Liz Stafford, for Black History Month. She spoke last night on unity for all people, and just an amazing, amazing woman who has done amazing things here in our community. So, it was wonderful to be able to give that proclamation last night. I also was able to give a proclamation today at Riverside Developmental Disabilities. March is National Disability Awareness Month, and I was able to go out there and be part of the open house that they had today, and just a wonderful time, and it's just a wonderful facility, and it just reminds us that we are to celebrate all abilities here in our community. So, I give thanks for the good folks at Riverside and the good work that they do. Also, just wanted to let the public know that I have been through a couple of trainings for public officials. I attended one this past Saturday in, just outside of Columbus in Dublin. And, you know, as I was sitting around the training, I was there with people from villages and cities all over the state, and as questions were coming from the, from the group and different comments, I, you know, and I know this, but I realized, again, what a wonderful place that we live, a wonderful place that we work, and the good job that our city employees do for our city. do for our city. It was really apparent to me, as the questions were coming from the audience, and I realized, well, we don't have to deal with that, and we don't have to deal with that, because we have wonderful people doing good work. So, that is something to really celebrate here in our city. I also want to let folks know, it's up on the city website. I have a blog as well, I know our city manager does. My blog is mayorheinz.wordpress.com, and so I will be uploading things there every once in a while, just to let people know kind of what I'm doing and what's going on through my eyes in the city. And if there's not any other news or agenda?
Casey?
Yes?
Where do we send our water donation?
Oh, thank you, yes. Water donation goes to Green Street United Methodist Church.
So, we can just drop it off there, or is there a time that we can drop it off, or?
They, I would say, just during regular business hours.
Do you know when they plan to make this trip to Michigan to take the water, so that we can be timely with our donations?
I would say if you drop it off in the next week, that would be probably fine.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, and again, I do encourage all citizens to drop off a case of water to Green Street. So, if there's any, no other business, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned.